Okay, great. We're going to go ahead and get started. All right, Community Seven is rolling. So if you could take your seats, that would be wonderful. There's a little bit of an echo here. The volume? Is that better? A little bit? Okay. Okay, great. So, welcome, everybody. My name is Melissa Henderson, and I'm the manager of the Healthy by Design Coalition of Yellowstone County. And I am proud to have organized this forum along with Kristi Drake from Billings Trailnet and Jed Barton from Living Independently for Today and Tomorrow. And we're just so excited to be engaging our city council candidates in a conversation around walkability, livability, and accessibility. And we're also really excited to see the turnout. The public is clearly interested in this issue as well. This forum is intended as information gathering, learning where our candidates stand on the issues, as well as what questions you have as a community. We are not endorsing any one idea or any candidate. It really is for information. In terms of housekeeping, please sign in if you get a chance. We also have water and snacks at the table there. At the sign-in table, there were different colored pieces of paper. If you have a question for the candidates, what we're asking you to do is write it on that piece of paper, and then put it in this green basket over here on the shelf. And I'll remind you towards the end when we have an opportunity to start collecting those. If you're not vaccinated against COVID-19, we encourage you to consider wearing a mask. Let's see. So, in terms of how we're going to work this forum, myself, Kristi, and Jed are going to alternate who is asking the question, and we're also going to alternate which candidate has a chance to answer first. So when we ask the question, we'll give them a cue about, okay, now pass it to your left, or pass it to your right. Each panelist will be given two minutes per question, and we have a packed agenda. So if you want to be even more brief, awesome, we'll keep rolling. Morgan Miller, who's in the front row here, has a timer, and so she'll be setting the timer. You'll be able to read it, and she'll give a little chirp when you're at the 20-second mark, I believe. Is that... yeah. So she'll keep us on time. Let's see. We're recording this with Community Seven, who's been a great partner. So this will be live on Facebook currently, and then they're posting the archived recording on their website. So thank you very much, Community Seven. Is there anything else I need to say before we get started? Okay. So what we'll do, candidates, is when you get the microphone for question one, I'll also have you introduce yourself and which ward you're running in, okay? So question one is, according to a national survey by the AARP, eight in 10 people surveyed prefer living in a walkable community, and six in 10 prefer places with easy, walkable access to their destinations. How important is walking, biking, rolling, and public transportation to Billings' quality of life and economic vitality? We'll start with Stephanie, and you can pass the mic to your left when you're done.
Hello. Okay, it's on. I'm Stephanie Krieger. I'm running for Ward One. And first off, I'd like to thank TrailsNet and Billings City Council, Healthy Choice and the Lift program, for everything they've done for our current trails and our parks and our sidewalks. They have actually transformed our city, and they're making it a place that we can connect with nature and also our neighbors. So thank you so much for everything you do. I appreciate it. As far as how important is walkability to our community and to quality of life and to economic viability, quality of life, it's essential. I mean, exercise is essential to helping our community, you know, have healthy citizens. It increases the longevity of our lives, decreases depression, and it also increases, again, our connection with nature and with our neighbors. So, that's, I mean, that's a given. As far as economic viability, I think there's some really good examples right now of economic viability that these trails and paths can give to our community. One example is Shiloh Road. I remember back in the day, it was hardly used. I think even part of it may have been gravel, and once they put that corridor in, it opened up a whole new dimension to our city. I mean, we have restaurants down there, we have medical buildings, we have even Shiloh Commons, which has the apartments. I mean, and what's so nice about that is, what's so nice about that is that it increases the city's tax revenue. So, that's a given. And then I was going to talk about Alkali Creek. If you look at that, that's, there's always people walking. They're talking to their neighbors. So, yes, it's, there is a true... nope, I'm out of time.
Okay. My name is Jennifer Owen. I am the candidate for Ward Two in the Heights. Thank you to everyone for being here. Thank you to our sponsors. This is a great chance to get out and talk about an issue that is clearly of importance to our community. Obviously, walkability, outdoor recreation, they're essential to not just quality of life in general, but who our community is. We are people who enjoy being in the outdoors. It brings us together as community. I think, well done. Things like trails and parks can form a critical preventative strategy for public safety. We know that when we activate portions of our community, then we reduce things like crime and vagrancy in those areas. And so those are really important strategies. I would caution just a little bit on relying too much on national studies. I had the privilege of getting to live and work in Washington, DC for about 10 years. And walkability in an area that is densely populated with limited access to vehicles is very different than walkability and recreation might look here in Montana. So, I certainly understand where the statistics would skew so heavily on a national basis. East Coast living is different than our way of life out here in Montana. I would want to see trails, accessibility, mobility, to be a part of our comprehensive transportation plan in this city. I don't think it should be isolated. I think we need to consider all ways that citizens navigate our community and ensure that we're looking at all parts of our community holistically and planning for different types of motorized and non-motorized transport concurrently, so that we have a sensible transportation infrastructure.
Thank you. I am Charlie Lovridge. I am a candidate for Ward Three. So, thank you all for coming. I really appreciate it. I'm honored that you're here. As a businessman in Billings for the last 32 years, I have seen the economy ebb and flow and Billings grow. Right now, we are experiencing groin pains. No question about that. One of my priorities is to make Billings a place people want to stay and live in. A town that our businesses, hospitals, corridors, schools, and the like can attract new, wonderful, young talent. This is why I'm working so hard promoting the Metro Park right now, to create the amenities that keep and attract our young people and attract new talent. So with that being said, anything that checks those boxes and brings more people to our community, boy, I'm all for it. Walkability of a community can define a city, especially a downtown corridor. It promotes healthy lifestyle, helps support Billings' economic growth. Redfin puts out a walkability score in Montana and ranks Billings, unfortunately, as the most unwalkable large city in Montana. I didn't know we had any large cities in Montana, but I guess we have large cities in Montana. I've been very active in putting Billings on the map for the state, on the map for a state-of-the-art Metro Park facility. All accessibility to our venues and what our great city has to offer should be on the table, and we should look at them each and every time they come up. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Denise Joy. I'm on the city council, representing Ward Three and running for reelection. And I'd like to thank our sponsors, Trailnet and Lift, all the sponsors that are sponsoring this. This is an important issue for our community, and I'd like to thank the other candidates on this table. It's hard to run for an election, so congratulations and thank you for running. I'd like to talk a little bit about just what walkability is. So some of the questions we can ask ourselves is, do we have room to walk? What are the conditions of our sidewalks? Are our sidewalks blocked? Are they cracked and unable, are you unable to move over them? How easy is it to cross a street? Try it at 24th and Grand. How long do the signals last? There's some really important view of traffic. Can you see the view of traffic so that you can safely cross the street? Do drivers behave? Are you making eye contact with them? Are they traveling into pedestrians? Do they run red lights? Follow, are you following the safety rules? Are we using the crosswalk? Are we crossing the streets in a safe way? And was your walk pleasant? Those are all kinds of questions that we need to ask ourselves about walkability. Active transportation is really important, but it's not just about our health. It's getting to where we need to be. So some of the areas of town that are the most walkable are in Ward Three. You can go and get your groceries. You can go to the CVS. You can do many things simply by walking. When we look at other parts of town, that walkability is not there. So, thank you. So it isn't just about whether or not we are attracting young people, but it's also about our aging population and their access to destinations that they would like to get to. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan. I'm a candidate in Ward Four, Dan Tizwell. I want to thank you for coming. More importantly, that the community is here to hear this than the sponsors that have us here. It's not working. There you go. A little closer. Okay, so thank you for the sponsors for having me here, and thanks for the community for showing up. How important. It's vitally important. My family's active, and we use what has been provided to us. We use the trails. We love the trails, and we're consistently on them, and even more so after COVID. So, every study that I've seen talks about people with places to walk remain satisfied with their quality of life, and I truly believe that. In the end, I believe it's vitally important that we continue to build, maintain, and secure all of these avenues of travel for Billings. And I think that's succinct and to the point there.
All right. Question number two, and we're going to begin with Daniel and move to his right. Much of our current transportation infrastructure excludes people who cannot drive or do not drive for reasons of age, ability, financial means, or, as a candidate last week pointed out, have lost it due to legal problems. As a city council member, what will you do to make sure that Billings accommodates the transportation needs of all residents, such as equitable access to employment, commerce, and services?
This question really hit me in the gut. It was really sad to think that the infrastructure excludes people. My mother's disabled and uses public transportation almost exclusively now. Although she's never described any exclusion, I believe the council needs to ascertain how the current infrastructure is excluding anyone, and we need to seek to fix those holes. We talk about accommodation, or it might be customization, but that's two different levels of expense, and I'm open to either one of them. Heard stats of nine riders per hour last week, and that was kind of crazy. I didn't know if, I was hoping that was an accurate data, or we're just underutilized by the target of people above. I really believe that we need to do some sort of a better marketing towards that group of people. We need to make or fill those holes for those folks. And really important, I think we need to provide some sort of an app for people that can pull it up on their phone, talk about where they are and where their destination is, and get an immediate read on what they need to do to get to their locations. App being very important, but we need to fill those holes. If there's exclusion areas, we really need to seek to fill those holes.
Thank you. Thank you. And I would like to just tell anyone who isn't sure that we do have an app for our buses. So, and that's very helpful in the wintertime. You can download the app. I believe it's called D3 or D2, and that app will tell you when the bus is coming. That's a very important thing for elderly people in the wintertime. You can just step out your door and know how soon that Met Transit will be there. So, yes, thank you very much. Absolutely. We have to support Met Transit. We've had questions of properties that wanted to be annexed into the city, and question was, will they be served by Met Transit? We can't have affordable housing or housing that's accessible to everyone in the city if we have housing that is far enough out that we don't have Met Transit available to them. Met Transit is really important. It's a federally sponsored program, so that's where you can speak up to your federal delegation and say, support Met Transit, support our transportation system here in the city. And that really is through that federal funding, which is very important. Another thing I'd like to talk about is the idea that, as Lift has done a survey, they absolutely know that we have many sidewalks that are unpassable because of broken disrepair. There are ramps that are not accessible. There are curbs that they can't get over. Those are all things that we need to continue to address, and that means that the council is cognizant and able to address those issues. Another thing is, where we build depends on how much we have available to those who have mobility issues. So, out there on a cul-de-sac, it might be pretty hard. Thank you.
Wonderful. So as city council members, we have the obligation to ensure services, public safety, city services, transportation, and infrastructure, and deliver that to all the residents effectively and efficiently. One of the things I like to do is I like to see something get fixed. And if it's broken, it probably needs to get fixed. That's one of the things I do, is fix things. I remember when I was a kid, and I know everyone, there's lots of people here remember this, remember Meet Me on the Met? Remember that campaign? I don't know. Anybody remember that? I remember that. I was a kid. I remember Meet Me on the Met. And I was wildly stymied when I heard that eight or nine people ride per each ride on the bus. Eight or nine people. That seems too low to me. So maybe that's something that we need to look at as a viable option for the folks that need public transit. Maybe they don't know about the app that Ms. Joy just talked about. Maybe that's something that we need to be better at marketing. And that's definitely something, if I'm so lucky to get elected to city council, we will address that. That's an inefficient way to use our monies. No question about that. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So I think this question is really one of vital importance. I've been really fortunate over the last few years to be able to dedicate my service to particularly women and children living in poverty in our community. I was executive director of Head Start for four years. I'm a family mediator, and I just recently signed on to be a guardian ad litem for abused and neglected children in our district court system. And I can tell you, I've worked closely with homeless populations in the community. I've worked with low-income populations. It's really hard to be poor in Billings. The physical labor of trying to navigate this city and accomplish the things that you need to do to move you or your family towards self-sustainability, resolve legal problems, turn your life around, is a physical labor that is very, very difficult. It is not easy to get places right now without a vehicle. It's not easy to get to services, to get to appointments on time. All of those are high-stress situations where if you miss an appointment, you have high-risk scenarios of losing housing, jobs, or your kids. So for people who are challenged with mobility, walkability, and accessibility, it is a dire situation right now, and I've seen it firsthand over and over. I think the first thing city council needs to do to address this is to listen to people with lived experience. Bring the people to the table who are trying to navigate this system. How do we fix Met? How do we reroute it? It's not just about where Met goes, but how you get on and off the bus system. If I'm a single mom with a baby and a toddler, and I have to go to the food bank to get a 50- or 60-pound box of food and move a stroller and get a kid, navigating the bus system is next to impossible right now. We need people who are doing this every day to join us in the problem-solving, and council needs to do more to bring that lived experience to the table. I also think we need to take a real look at zoning and urban planning. We need walkable neighborhoods where you can walk down to the corner to a drugstore or to a coffee shop or to grab a sandwich. We need to be planning and talking to developers about creating walkable neighborhoods where not everything relies on motorized transit.
That's really good, Jen. You know, public transportation is critical in a growing city. And as a real estate broker, you know, I am meeting new people every day, coming into Billings and coming into Montana. And so we really need to look at our public transportation system. You know, many of us have cars, and we have the luxury of having a vehicle. There are individuals that don't have cars, and to get ahead, I mean, they need public transportation so they can get to their jobs, so they can get to the grocery store. And I had nieces that actually used public transportation to get to their schools, and I always worried about them. You know, I worried about their safety. And so that's something we need to look at. We need to make sure that the public transportation is equitable. We always need to look at these programs and make sure they're working, as Charlie said, because, you know, when you only have nine people on a bus, I mean, how do we get more people utilizing the public transportation? A second topic that deals with transportation is the sidewalks and the condition of our current sidewalks. As a veteran, I have a lot of friends that, you know, they've lost their mobility. They've lost their way of life. And, you know, being able to function in a city and get around without, like, falling off a broken sidewalk or not having, you know, an ADA-compliant sidewalk, it really goes to my heart. And I mean, I think that's one way all of us can pay it forward, is by making sure that our sidewalks are functioning properly. So, thank you.
Melissa's going to take that other microphone because it seems to be kind of malfunctioning, so I hope you don't mind just taking it all the way down. Okay. This one goes to Jennifer, and you'll pass it to your left after, okay? So Jennifer, and then rest of our candidates. Some would say that no one uses trails or bike lanes, and they cost too much money to build and maintain. How do you feel about this?
Well, I think Dan mentioned this earlier, and I'm sure we would all agree, that during the pandemic, we saw that it's not the case, that people don't use our trails and bike paths. I think they were a tremendous asset for our community while we were all stuck in our houses and anxious to get out and breathe a little fresh air. I know in the Heights, some of the trails that are very popular down there along Alkali Creek, along Wix, and they were packed all the time. And I think that's an incredible asset that we have in our community. I would like to know more, and I would hope as a council member to understand more about the costs of building trails. Is there, are there things we can do to be more cost-effective? Is doing business with the city driving up the cost of business? Are there opportunities where we can use packed dirt or other materials instead of concrete to extend our trail network and be more affordable? I'd like to have us continually be exploring and testing our assumptions to make sure that we're able to be as comprehensive as possible. As I mentioned earlier, I think it's really important that we consider both motorized and non-motorized transportation when we do our community planning. So we should be integrating the trails network into the way we look at our community holistically, leaving no neighborhoods out. We ought to be extending infrastructure to all parts of our community so that businesses and families can get out, be accessible, and be enjoyed by our community. Maintenance is a real concern. There's no question about it. It's important that when we invest in things for the taxpayers, we maintain them well. So we need to have not just capital plans, but ongoing operation and maintenance strategies so that we ensure that tax dollars are being used wisely and invested for the real benefit of our community. So I think there's a lot to learn, a lot of conversations to have, and some exploration that I'd like to do if elected to city council.
So I really struggled with this question, and I really struggled with the generic comment of, it's just too expensive. It's too, it's baseless to me. It doesn't mean anything. So I'm not going to comment on that because many people would say the opposite, that it's not expensive enough. So I'm not going to... As for me, I believe that it's an absolute attraction to a city. No question asked. These are the kinds of things that do bring people to our city and keep people staying in our city. I think anytime you have successful municipalities, they need to be discussed and promoted in various ways, public-private partnerships, et cetera, et cetera. I think there are tons of different avenues that we can take going forward through the municipalities, as well as the private sector, to ensure that we can continue to build these walks, pathways, bike paths for the community, as well as public transportation. So with that being said, I don't like the question very much, so I just changed it. Soon to be easier that way. So, yeah, exactly. How do I feel? So I do believe that they are expensive, and one of the things, like Jennifer said, as a piggybacker, yes, the hard part is not affording them the initial expense. The hard part, of course, is maintaining them. That's the hardest part about the paths. But I do think where there's a will, there's a way, and as hard as these folks have worked, putting those things together and getting them in our community, it's probably definitely something that we need to sit down and look at and take to heart.
Thank you. I had the fortunate, I was fortunate enough to do a training with the CDC on active transportation through eight models. Part of that was for me to do a project of public outreach in terms of our new bike lane boulevard, our bike boulevard that will be put across a little farther east than North Park, all the way to Rose Park, and a little bit farther west than Rose Park. And so I was at the Strawberry Festival. And it was amazing and fun, and that public engagement is really, really important. I stopped counting the number of people who stopped at the table at 350 because I just could not keep up. And that was hours before the Strawberry Festival was over. There were positive comments across the board. Bike boulevards are not very expensive to put in. It puts in a certain amount of striping on the street. It puts in some wayfinding signs and some enhanced crossings. Those are expensive. But the reason why it's on Avenue C and D is because public feedback has been, we don't like bike boulevards on fast streets. It slows down the traffic. So we have one on Lewis Avenue, and consistently, people came to us and said, the bikes are a nuisance. We're not sure what they're doing. They're going too slow. It's slowing us down. Our response to that was to move our bike boulevard onto Avenue C and D, slower traffic. It encourages more people to use it, and it also deals with some of the issues that have been brought up by motorists. So we want to reduce conflict between bicycles, pedestrians, and motorists. That's part of the way that we encourage their use, and we have higher levels of active transportation. So I hope that if you who were there at the Strawberry Festival and stopped by, thank you very much.
I agree with Charlie on this one. I'm not real happy with that question. Some would say that no one uses the trails or bike lanes and that they cost too much to build. How do I feel about that? I really think that's hogwash. Do guys use that word much? The trails and the bike lanes are utilized. I'm amazed every day when I drive down Rymark to see the people out, just out. It's fantastic. Yeah, the costs are always going to be there, and the maintenance costs are always going to be there. I think what we need to do is focus and try to find ways to offset these costs, because they're never going to go away. They're always going to increase. They're never going to go away, whether that be reallocating funds or increase the fundraising or even increasing volunteerism. I think those are things that we have to look at. Maybe the possibility of developing a citywide volunteer program to take care of these things would be a good idea. Maybe that's something we take a look at. But we need to maybe find a way to just simply offset these costs. They don't need to go away by any means. So we've got to do something.
You know, I can kind of understand why people would be opposed to trails and parks. I mean, they're looking at their property tax, and they're like, I don't want another mail levy, you know? And they're, they just, you know, and then they think about what's happened in the last two years. And you've had, you know, you've watched the news, and it says there's $28 trillion deficit or debt. And they're saying all these local businesses are closing, and then, you know, now I've just heard that there's a water shortage in Billings and that we need to start conserving water. So I can see how people would say, what's going on? Why are we spending all this money on trails and parks? And then you have people that are, they're car enthusiasts. They're like, why don't we build a track? And I can go test out my car. Or you have boat enthusiasts, and they're like, let's get another lake. And they actually are. I just found out. They're going to have one that's four times as big as Lake Elmo. So people are really excited about that. But I do think it's achievable, finishing all these trails and working with developers, land developers, the city... The city requires that they actually put in trails and they put in parks when they're developing these new neighborhoods. So that will help a lot with the trail net vision of completing these trails. We just need to make sure that it's organic and that these new trails feed into these main trails. But I do believe if we all work together, we can achieve it. So I'm not too worried about it. I think it can be done.
Okay. The next one, we'll start with Denise if you want to pass the mic to her. And I don't know if tradition, if two counts as tradition, but one thing that we neglected to do at the start of this event was take a wonderful audience selfie and then a candidate selfie. And so since we're a solid 30 minutes in and this is all about movement, I am going to take a little break and do a selfie. Is that good? Okay. So we'll start with the audience. On the count of three, I want to see fun arms, smiles, we're excited about accessibility, okay? One. Oh, I need to move back, this group is so big. One, two, three. Yeah. All right. Thank you guys for counsel. So one, two, three. Any arms up? All right. Thank you, everyone. So we're all energized. So question four, we're going to start with Denise and you will pass to your right this time. All right. So actively commuting to school improves students' physical and mental health, cognitive development, and academic performance, and it also saves on transportation costs. In 2020, the Billings City Council identified safe routes to schools as a top 10 priority. If elected, how will you improve safe walking, biking, and rolling?
Thank you for the question. The city council voted before the budget was passed to add an additional $250,000 to our Safe Routes to School program. So it is a program within the public utilities. Trails are different than safe routes to school. They may overlap to a certain extent, but Safe Routes to School is a program within the public works in order to accomplish safe routes for students. So, well, let's talk about some of the issues. We have schools, a safe route to school is one route. It does not cover every intersection. So tragically, there was a boy from Lewis and Clark who was hurt. He crossed the street on Broadwater in that dip down low. The sun was shining in the motorists' eyes, they did not see him and hit him. Luckily, he recovered from his, from his accident. And in Lewis, at Lewis and Clark, I was there at the time, we have, there are TVs in the lunchroom and every day, a message was flashed across the screen that said, use a safe route to school, be safe. He had crossed where he shouldn't have. He should have been on 14th Street. But it was out of the way. It was farther than he wanted to walk. So he crossed where he shouldn't have. That was part of the reason for his accident. But I ask myself, we're expecting kids at middle school to accept this message of where to cross and doing it right? And when do we do that with motorists? Where are our messages to motorists to slow down, keep your eyes open, and especially slow down? Because we know that at the speed of 35 miles an hour, your survivability from an accident deeply decreases. So thank you.
So I grew up here in Billings, so I've been here 50 some years. I won't tell you how many 50s it is, but it's quite a few at this point. I remember walking to Rimrock School, there weren't any sidewalks. Everybody walked everywhere we went and we took our bikes. So when they did decide to fix that, I thought that was great. Because I can remember more than once riding that, riding along there thinking, boy, I might, I might meet my maker today. It was pretty scary some days. So I absolutely think that safe routes is, it's a great idea. One of the things that concerns me a little bit, though, is I'm not exactly sure that we have a ton of them in Ward Three, being that it's an older community. A lot of the houses are older, there's not a lot of new construction. And if I get on the board, that's something we're going to, or the council, that's something we're going to look at, is why we don't have more safe routes in those, in that community. I think, I think it's imperative that we look at that. Anyhow, I, I'm really curious to learn about the possibility of that. It just makes sense going forward and we don't want to have any kids get run over, that's for sure. For me, the safe routes is the thing that gets me excited. Bike paths and all that, they're fantastic, those are great, but kids' safety, being able to know where our kids are, if they take the safe routes, we know where they're at. I used to climb over fences and jump over hills and, and run through people's gardens trying to get to school. It was like, it was the greatest. I felt like Indiana Jones and, you know, trying to get through, get to school. We don't need that. What we need to do is make sure that we have, we know where our kids are when they're walking to school. That way, the neighborhood can keep an eye on them as well. And that's one thing that neighborhoods do is keep an eye on our kids for us. So if in fact we get those safe, those safe routes for our schools, I do believe that we could effectively diminish the possibilities of any nefarious activities as well as kids getting run over.
Well, much like Charlie, I too grew up walking to school, walked to Sandstone, walked to Castle Rock. And in portions of the Heights, there are really fantastic safe routes to schools, routes that cut through the corners of subdivisions so kids are walking far away from roads and traffic, and that's really important. But when I look at some of the other Safe Route to Schools maps, particularly on the east side of Maine where I live now, I mean, they are routes to schools, but I'm not sure I would call them safe routes to schools. So I think it's really important that city council set clear policy as to what constitutes a safe route so that we can think about young children and particularly having to navigate by ways that may be tricky. And I think we should be clear on that. If I have my facts right, I think the last time that a Safe Routes to School study was completed was 2011. We're probably in need of an update. We need to understand where we are, how the city has grown and evolved, and where some of those routes need to be planned for. There is far more need for joint planning with the school district. I think this is true in planning routes to schools as well as planning impact on schools. As many of you probably know, the city has criteria when it considers zone changes or annexations, but those don't really look at how kids would safely get to and from schools. They might look at overcrowding in schools and they might look at overcrowding of motorized pathways, but that impact on how kids might navigate a new neighborhood or how population dynamics would impact Safe Routes to Schools, I don't think that gets enough attention when the city looks at new neighborhood developments or zone changes or projects. So I really think it's important that council keep it as a priority and that we do more to ensure that our kids and our families are able to get to school safely.
So I agree 100% that exercise improves our cognitive abilities and also our physical health. That's been proven over and over again. And being a helicopter parent, I mean, till the fourth grade, I think I walked my kids to school and even though they didn't want to, and then pretty soon they're running ahead of me. And we all want our kids to be able to walk to school and ride their bikes and have safe routes. It's really imperative and it gives them a sense of independence as well. And at the elementary level, it seems like we do have fairly safe routes and we have crossguards and other parents. But then once you get to the middle school or the high school level, it gets a bit more precarious and you just kind of worry about your kids. And with these new middle schools that we have, I don't know if they've actually developed the safe routes yet. So we, without being redundant, I think we really need to work with our parents and also with all of our school boards around the area to make sure that we have those safe routes and that our kids can walk and, and ride their bikes to school.
I remember actually when they were planning to build Ben Steel School out there and one of our major concerns was the route that my son would take to get to that school. It was not developed yet. But in the end, kudos to the city because that 54th quarter going down there is fantastic right now. I mean, he could slid to school if he had to. And there's obviously a plan in place, this is a top 10 priority. So I'm assuming and I'm believing there's a plan in place, but where do we currently sit on that? Jennifer just mentioned something about a study being done last in 2011. We really need to update that and we need community input. We need to figure out where to direct our focus, what processes need to be addressed now to move forward in that plan. And maybe we proceed with an alternate plan or a different focus, but let's move forward because that seems to me that this is one of the most important factors in Billings, Safe Route to Schools. So, yeah, that's.
Before I ask the next question, I don't have all of the details off the top of my head, but there is a study, a Safe Route study in the works for the coming next couple of years, I believe. So stay tuned. Which actually brings us to question five and we'll begin with Charlie and he'll pass the microphone to his left. Currently, there is no reliable or consistent federal, state, or local funding source dedicated to trails or safe routes to schools. Instead, Billings often relies on unpredictable sources such as grants to make projects happen. Would you be open and supportive of developing reliable, consistent funding sources for trails and safe routes? Do you have any ideas about how we might do that?
Well, as we're all reeling right now from COVID and, and the ugliness that occurred because of it, taxes and fees are taking a toll on our families and small businesses. I think they need a break for a while. No question about that. As a small business owner, I talk to people every day and they're hurting out there pretty good. If it's not, if it's not because of COVID, it's because we can't get any employees, et cetera, et cetera. So telling them that they're going to pay more in taxes is, that's a tough pill to swallow. Getting them, I think getting them to vote for it and support it would be difficult as well right now. I think give them a year, maybe that's something we can look into for sure, but I think right now is a tough time to do that. I would however, like to look at how we can develop more private-public partnerships and look to realign budget resources that might be being wasted on programs that have outlived their usefulness for various reasons. Being a business owner, I must make hard budgetary decisions every single day. It's a hard thing. Sometimes I say, gosh, I really would love to do that, but you know what? We can't because we have to deal with this. That's what we do. Sometimes those priorities are difficult and difficult decisions have to be made by people. And I'm hoping that if I can get on the council, I can, I can be that person that makes the tough decision that's what's best for the community.
Sorry, I wasn't listening to the directions. Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Yeah, this is a really, that's a really good question. Oh, how do you prioritize and fund what you have as a priority? Trail Net came before council some time ago talking about, really kind of, when you look at our public works, everyone gets their water bill. One of the, one of the things that really can help in terms of finding ways to address a funding was the idea that was brought forward about a, a $2 donation that could be made from a water bill for our trails, Safe Routes to School. At the time, it didn't move forward. There were talk, there were discussions on whether the system would be opt-in or opt-out. So there have been discussions also about how we fund our parks and trails. We could go to a dedicated mill levy. Anything like that would of course come before the public. The voters would have to decide whether or not we had a dedicated mill levy. That's an opportunity and some of that, some of that's really important. It's important for us as members of our community to step up and say, okay, is this a priority? Where you spend your money is a priority. And sometimes when we are in discussions or we have a lot of demands on our, our funding, excuse me, a lot of demands on our funding, the question is, how much support is there from the public for this? So one of the good options about going for a mill levies is that all of you get to decide. All of you get to choose whether or not this is a priority. This is not council telling you it should be a priority, it is you actually deciding that. And the same way, if it were a dedicated donation on your water bill, you would be able to decide that. And then we as council would know that is a priority. Thank you.
This is a great question. I would be and am completely open to anything we'd be able to do to enhance the quality of life in our city. Sure, it's a city's responsibility to provide some of these amenities and I get that, but if I'm not, if I'm not incorrect here, the Parks Department got cut by $2 million this year on their budget. That's a shame. In the end, we need to laser focus on all current and alternate sources of funding, private, nonprofit, public, local, state, federal. And we need to continue to grow that fundraising and volunteer base. I think that's the only way to fight this and keep it, keep it moving forward to save, I guess, any port in a storm. We need to keep that laser focus on those funding sources and we need to enhance them if possible, whether it be reallocation or something. I don't, boy, that's a scary thing when we talk about reallocation with this budget. It really is. But again, most important thing here is, is the city and what we can do for them. So again, I'm open to anything that will enhance the quality of life here. I love it here.
So if we want to fund trails and parks, you know, we are going to have to look at all different avenues, whether it's grants, which I've helped with writing grants when I was a teacher and they're not fun, they're a lot of work, but that's one avenue, working with private and public to try to come up with some ideas to raise money or looking for federal or state funds that might assist with the goal of finishing these trails. So a mill levy, you know, like Charlie says, I don't know if the property owners will be very happy with that. Prices of homes have gone up in the last year, $100,000 for most homes. So where it was $237,000 for a typical home in Billings, it's now $337,000. So that means also that their property taxes go up incredibly. So we just have to be aware of that when we're trying to, you know, spend more money, more taxpayers' money. But I do believe we can, we can achieve it, so.
I, I'm empathetic to the grants challenge. We're very empathetic to it in the Heights. The inner belt loop has been a priority for us for three decades and we have been limping along to get funding for this and finally got a grant. So a critical transportation infrastructure and a beautiful trail will now get built in two and two and a half years instead of five, seven, 10, or some other multiple number of years. So we're thrilled. It is hard work, but it's an important asset and it's something that we should, it's a tool we should keep in our quiver. Denise mentioned a few minutes ago, something on a water bill. I'm very supportive of an opt-in. I think the people who are motivated to educate taxpayers in this community about a choice to dedicate on every water bill, a dollar or $2 toward parks, I think they will get the word out. I would not support an opt-out because I think there's less likelihood that there will be a comprehensive education campaign to let low-income people or fixed-income families understand that they have the option to opt-out. So I'd be very for an opt-in. I'd be really concerned about an opt-out. And I'll be very candid, I get concerned when we talk about dedicated funding streams. Budgets are about priorities. They are about our values. It's a conversation that should take place robustly every year. I would hate for our community to be in a position where we have a dedicated funding stream that runs a surplus and at the same time, we're having to go out for a mill levy in some other funding category because we can't move funds between boxes. There may be years when parks and trails and accessibility can be high priorities and we, we can deprioritize other things. There may be years where that have to shift. We need to be sophisticated enough, not just as council members, but as neighbors in a community working together to say, this year, we're going to focus on these things and next year, we'll focus on these things, but to weigh and evaluate those things rather than creating sort of sacred boxes where funds are locked up and can't be used for the highest priority on a community-wide basis.
Thank you. Our next question is, city council has adopted several plans, including the Billings Area Bike Way and Trails Master Plan, Billings Growth Policy, Billings Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and the city council's annual priority list. These plans help our city be competitive. These plans help our city be competitive for funding opportunities and reach our, help reach our city's goals. As a council member, how would you support moving forward with the plans that have been adopted by prior councils? Stephanie, we'll have you answer first and send the microphone to your left.
So Billings is on a precipice of tremendous growth, and I think tremendous greatness. We have a great migration moving inward. I don't know if you've noticed that. There's people from all over our nation that are moving to states like Montana because they love our rugged individualism, they love our sense of nature and wanting to blaze our own trails, and they like the safety of our state. So we just have to realize that we may have to adapt some of these plans, but we all should read these plans and make sure, I mean, there's people that have spent hours and hours working on these master plans, and they've dedicated their life to some of these plans. So if they still apply, let's go ahead and work to complete them and honor those people and the work that they've done, and if they don't, let's go ahead and adjust them so that they work for this growing city.
Couldn't agree more, actually. I think if we're going to do plans, let's use them. I know we're due this year for an update to the growth policy. I think that's important. That should be a community-wide process with lots of conversations. We can do more as a council and as residents to make sure those plans talk to each other and integrate. We shouldn't be doing planning in a vacuum. Our Parks and Rec Plan should reflect our growth plan, which should reflect our urban transit plan. We need these things to be interlaped and connected. In 2019, I was really fortunate to be part of a group of business owners in the Heights to help either start or restart, depending on your perspective, a Heights Business Association. And it was exactly the same challenge that we struggled with in the Heights. There's no clear vision for Main Street. The Heights Neighborhood Growth Plan, the Heights Neighborhood Master Plan, is over a decade old, and there's no funds in the city for that to be updated anytime soon. And yet, our community, our neighborhood, and many neighborhoods around this city need that kind of vision document so that as this growth comes in, we're able to incorporate it into the kinds of neighborhoods that we want to see. We're able to ensure that there's quality-of-life amenities and residential and traffic. We need these vision documents, but we need them to be used regularly. I don't hear often enough, when I watch council meetings, and I watch them every Monday night, I don't hear as often enough referring back to plans. Sometimes the growth policy gets talked about, but I don't hear enough updates on those plans, status reports, check off the box, did we do the tasks that are required? I know the Parks Board has done a really good job of providing annual updates that align with the Parks Plan, but we should be working those plans on council on a regular, at least quarterly basis, to ensure that we're incorporating them into the thinking and planning and policymaking at a council level. There's no point in investing hundreds of thousands of dollars for a document that sticks on the shelf. These need to be active, they need to be updated, and they need to really be holistic to the community.
Thank you. I would do everything in my power to help encourage grants, public-private partnerships, support fundraising for these projects. I think they're worth that effort. Working on the Metro Park Vision over the last couple of years, I've been instrumental in raising over $300,000 to achieve our goal for education and promotion of this very important project for Billings and Yellowstone County. Of all the people on this panel, and Jennifer knows this because we've worked hand-in-hand in this several times together, of all the people here on this panel, I know what it takes to raise money. I know what it takes to go out and get something done and achieve our goals. It requires hard work and a whole ton of hustle, and sometimes you've got to buy somebody lunch and tell them what's going on and get their support. That's okay, though. It's lunch. But with that being said, in the end, it's completely worth it, much like what these community-minded folks are doing, Trailnet. She left. Yep, absolutely. Amazing, they work their tails off on this because they're passionate. They feel the need, and they feel that this is what's best for the community, and I applaud them. And that's why I say, I would do everything I could do to help them pursue their goals and help us with these paths and these bike paths. I think they're fantastic for Billings. It's not easy, though, and I can understand wanting to make sure that we have a consistent trail of money to make it happen. I get that. However, much like with Jennifer, Dan, I'm going to piggyback her again, you seem to always be right there. Like Jen said, we need to make sure that we don't get stuck in a time warp, that we can only use that money for just bikes, bike trails, and we need to be able to have proper priorities just in case. For example, we have a real drug problem in Billings, Montana, a real drug problem. That should be a priority, an absolute priority, or it's going to take our youth and it's going to cost us a lot of money in the end. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. As we all know, city council elections run on a two-year cycle. So this is a political reality that all of us up here should understand, and I think it's important for the public to understand. We run on a two-year cycle. Every two years, a different seat on council will be up for election. The priorities that are set by the council are very important, and they should continue on. The Billings Growth Policy is referenced every single time that we have a zone change. Any parts of the planning are part of our growth policy. They have to be interpreted. They're not simply an X, Y, Z plus and minus. They have to be interpreted in terms of how we use them in our planning. Luckily for us, there's a FTE, Full-Time Employee, that's being added into the Planning Department that will allow us to get some laser focus, some really good focus on updating our neighborhood plans, which are very important to our planning. As we annex our property into the city, we need to have those areas planned and make them fit with our growth policy, make them fit with our bike way and path and trails policies. These documents are very important. The Bike Boulevard, our CIP, those have been around for a very long time. In fact, I found original documents from 1976 that identify a Bike Boulevard for the city of Billings. And guess what? We're doing it, and it's 2021. So we have plenty of plans. We need to find some funding for them very often. So thank you.
A gentleman last week said, and with this question, there is no shortage of plans. We love to plan. We just get bogged down when we have to work those plans. And I feel like some of these plans are bogged down. I believe that they've been successful in gaining funding, but where do they stand right now? We don't need to ream it. We just need to keep it moving a bit. I feel like community input is just huge for these plans, but everything's 500 pages of words and charts and not understandable and frankly, very boring. I really believe in the sort of the Cliff Notes. It would go a long way towards community understanding and hopefully, community involvement in these plans. Show me the measurements so we can celebrate our successes, have some accountability, and above and beyond everything else, transparency. We have got to get the community on board, and we have got to move forward with these plans. I don't want to event the wheel. I just want to keep it moving.
Thank you. Okay, so now we are entering what we're calling the lightning round. We have three questions left, and due to the smaller size, as well as the brevity of some of the responses, we do believe we have time to get through all of our questions, and then we will open it up to the audience. The candidates from last week will have an opportunity to answer all the questions. We'll be sending them out, so don't worry about getting an edge this week. If you are a member of an audience and you have a question, Ruhiya in the back has our handouts, our little pieces of paper, so you can definitely write those down. And then there's a green basket over here, and to the gentleman that brought his up, we'll put it in that mix as well. So you'll have a few more minutes to get those in. For the lightning round, you'll each be given one minute to answer the question. So the first one is, and we'll start with Daniel, and he'll pass it to the right, is progress for our community depends on working with other governmental jurisdictions, such as county commissioners, state legislatures, and some instances. How would you promote a collaborative relationship with the county or the state?
I believe this goes back to things we learned in kindergarten. My entire professional success has been dependent upon collaborative relationships, and every one of those has started out with a conversation or two. In the end, people do business with people they like. I want to understand what the problems and the issues that exist, why is there no collaboration, or why is there an issue with collaboration with the county? And then I want to seek to work together and fix these things, and it all comes down to meeting halfway with them. That's easy. So again, things we learned in kindergarten.
Thank you for the question. The council went through a process with a request for the TED that is located out in the county. We had meetings, we had committees that were formed to work with the county commissioners. We are on our way to possibly finishing our purchase of the Stillwater Building. The county is currently, has a floor in that building. Those are absolutely important collaborations. The city council went forward, and I supported, allowing our sewer system to be connected to the TED area to help the county develop in the TED area. That was a very important collaboration. There were issues. We worked through them. That was accomplished, and we will continue to work on the Stillwater Building and how best we can collaborate with them on that, too. Thank you.
Excellent. So for the past several years, including the last two years as the president of the Metro Park Advisory Board, I've developed a tremendous working relationship with our county commissioners, and I can see that relationship continuing if I get elected to city council. I've worked closely with the commissioners, meeting frequently, getting their take and advice on different aspects of ongoing Metro Park operations, and have found them to be very pragmatic, actually, and good to work with. One of the things that has germane to forging the new, better bridge between the city and county is working together. Right now, we don't do a lot of that. There seems to be some animosity there, and I'm not exactly sure, but I'm hell-bent on making sure that we can work better with them, that's for sure. It is bad business not to work together. No question about that. After all, the work is being done between the two of us, I'm sorry, oh, between the two of us to betterment of our community and our economy. It's just good old-fashioned common sense.
I think it's important when we talk about collaboration between governmental entities to recognize that there really is a lot of positive work going on at the staff level. Over the last few years, I've had a chance to sit as a citizen representative on corridor planning efforts for both the Billings bypass and the inner belt loop, and I've seen firsthand that for transportation planning, Montana Department of Transportation, the city, the county, they're working hand-in-hand all the time, and they really do it well. Those of us who either are or aspire to be elected officials need to follow their lead. We need to spend time together. City council, county commissioners, and school board used to meet quarterly. It seems like COVID, that kind of fell off, but we need to get back on track. We need to be spending time together to build those relationships and those collaborations. We need to focus on mutual benefit, not just pressing our own agenda, which we should do robustly, but understanding what the other side or other governmental entities need to gain as well. But I think through spending some time together and really trying to find that mutual common ground, we can do much more for the people of Billings.
You know, I think our county commissioners are very accessible. They're very easy to talk to, to get a hold of. There shouldn't really be any issues with the city council working with the county commissioners. You know, just keep those lines of communication open, try to stay positive, and work together to achieve these things we want to achieve. One topic that I have just learned about recently from some police officers that I know, they said, you know, you can hire more police officers, but what we need are larger jails because we arrest people and we have no place to put them, and that's a county thing. So I think in the future, we're going to have to talk to the county commissioners and see, well, is there a way to enlarge jails? You know, I mean, so that's one little thing that we may have to work with them in the future, so just keep those lines of communication open.
Mr. Senator Jennifer. Mr. Senator Jennifer. And you'll be passing it to your left. As city council members, you are asked to make decisions about a variety of resources and topics that you may not yet be familiar with. How do you plan to engage stakeholders and community partners in understanding the issues that are presented?
Yeah, I appreciate that question because I think it's really important. For the last almost two years, I've served as chair of our Heights Neighborhood Task Force. I think those neighborhood task forces are really important. They're a great way for citizens to get involved, for people to visit with elected officials, for them to hear about what's going on in the city, and for them to share their opinions on decisions that are upcoming and give that feedback. So I think as a council member, I would want to continue, certainly in my ward, working with the task force, and would encourage my colleagues on council to do the same. I think we need to be out in the community. We need to reach out intentionally to groups who we know will be impacted by decisions and not just sit back and wait for them to come to us. I think it's important that we be nimble and sophisticated. We should be visible on social media. We should be present in the community. We should be reaching out and talking to people. And I, with all due respect to the 11 members who are serving really hard on council right now, we have to fix the council meetings. We have to have shorter agendas that allow real public input with adequate time and information for everybody to be a part of the decision.
Here, here, because at 11:30, I will have been in bed for two hours. So that's too late. Anyhow, is that about right? I figured. As a council member, I plan to be completely accessible, transparent with city business. I welcome all meetings, and will host coffees, listening sessions, and attend task forces. When there's a decision being made, I'll be very open with both opponents and proponents of any business within the city. It's that open dialogue that helps bring groups together in consensus and will help build and supply a better vision for Billings.
Thank you. Yes, very good. Lots and lots of meetings, lots and lots of places to go as a council member. Every moment that you're at home and you're just sitting there, you're thinking, I'm missing a meeting, there's somewhere a meeting, I should be somewhere. There's a lot of really intense work that needs to be done as a council member. You will never make every meeting. They can't happen. They're booked on top of each other, so you will have to prioritize task forces absolutely. Every town meetings, whatever is available, you'll be there, and you will be overwhelmed with possibilities for meetings. It's all very, very important. And, well, as a member of the council, thank you. As a member of the council, I can say 11:30 is very, very late. Thank you.
I do agree with Jennifer and the rest of the panel that we need to rein in these meetings and get more community involvement. Again, I enjoy the journey of a conversation. I like building and growing relationships on a two-way street. I intend to get more focused on gaining input from my constituents, stakeholders, and community partners to better understand their wants and needs. It'll give me an opportunity to define a process, a better process for their goals, their goals, their end goals. The Good Lord gave me two ears and one mouth for a reason, and I believe communication is primary in that. And the second Sales 101 thing I would do is do what you say you'll do. Do what you say you'll do. Listen to what needs to be done, listen to what people want done, and then define that process.
Let's see if I can get this all in. I've been engaging businesses and stakeholders in our community currently and in the past. As a real estate broker, I talk to businesses and, you know, constituents every day, all over the city, actually. And I've been going to all different kinds of community gatherings, task force meetings, everything I am invited to or can crash so that I can learn more about what issues are really affecting all of us. Some things that I've learned are, one, there's, we need a redundancy in our water systems, and that's what, we need to focus on that because if we run out of water, we don't have a city. We also, a lot of people want community gardens in their neighborhoods, so that could be something that the city council could help with. Also, maybe creating pockets of commercial real estate so that we have more poly food baskets. Also, code enforcement, drugs, there needs to be repercussions for people that destroy other people's property, and... And there's a lot more going on. I'm out of time, but thank you.
Okay, this next one goes to Denise Joy first. And this is the last panel question. And then Melissa's gonna be getting the audience questions. And I believe we'll have time. So last call for audience questions while we're finishing up this last panel question. Many communities larger than ours, such as Butte Silver Bow, have an ADA coordinator on staff whose primary duty is supporting ADA compliance for residents. Do you think this would be beneficial for the Billings community? Why or why not?
Thank you for the question. Yes, I do think it would be beneficial. As we all know, the city is of different ages. Some areas you're in are brand-new where they are ADA compliant. And many areas are very much older and are not. The issue that comes up when we see those problems is how do we fix it? And it always comes down to funding because that's just how it works. But having someone actually look at those areas help us to prioritize. So the council has many areas where we receive advice from not only staff, but from our volunteer boards and commissions. And having staff members dedicated to working on issues allows us to more clearly define the issue, to collect data, and to use that data to help us to make decisions. So absolutely. And then, of course, it comes down to funding. Thank you.
I don't know enough about this to make a detailed comment. However, I work with these folks in my business. This seems like a redundant position for me. And the reason is, code enforcement, city engineers and planners, they're already doing this job. They go out there and they make sure that everybody's following the ADA compliance. I have worked with many of these engineers over the years. They're great guys, and they are professionals. They are competent and great at their jobs. And to be honest with you, pretty darn nitpicky. They'll make sure you do your job properly, which I appreciate. They keep us sharp. Increasing our city's bureaucracy is not a path I want to encourage.
So I would say I have some similar thoughts. When I listen to council meetings, I do hear council members and staff talking about accessibility issues, talking about sidewalk widths, for example, talking about the problems with accessibility in our current city council. I know right now, Main Street is being completely redone in part because the sidewalks aren't accessible, and that needs to be addressed. So I hear those conversations going on. At the same time, I respect that it may not be enough for folks who have real mobility and accessibility challenges. So if we were able to identify someone within the existing city infrastructure who could focus and prioritize this as a part of their duties, then I think that would be important because it is often a question not of will, but of funding. So identifying accessibility barriers is one thing. Funding to fix them is another. And a dedicated staff person who's already working in code enforcement or transportation planning, who could focus on funding and prioritizing that, I think is something worth having a conversation about.
Well, as I understand it, the city council has already approved a new position for code reinforcement. And I guess Nicole Cromwell was actually doing planning, zoning, and code enforcement. So they've split up those duties, and that could be the perfect person that could adopt some of the ADA compliant codes that we need to get enforced. So I have complete faith in the city and the administrators that they will figure this out without creating another position.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Excuse me. Excuse me. Butte Silver Bow, huh? Okay. If you could show me valid examples of how an ADI compliance coordinator can increase the effectiveness and ensure compliances above and beyond those of the federal ADA compliances, I'd be open to look at the addition. And then I'd really ask you to help me search for an already crowded budget on how to pay that salary. But in the end, let's do what's right for Billings. That's all I'm worried about, Billings. So.
Okay. You went right. You started that one? Okay, perfect, perfect. All right. So that concludes the questions that we had prepared and sent the candidates in advance. In the remaining time that we have, I have three audience questions. If you have additional questions, you can put them in that basket. And the way we'll do this is each council member will have 30 seconds to respond. And if you don't want to respond, you don't have to. We'll just say, you know, I'll ask the question. And Jennifer, if you want it, you say "me," and we pass the mic. Morgan will still time you, though. The first question, in no particular order, is, North 27th Street is the most direct route from the valley to the rims. What will it take to finally, this is underlined, finally, get a path so that people can walk, cycle, jog, et cetera, up 27th Street safely?
Thank you. I'll just hand it off as someone else would like to answer. We have actually talked about that. And Scott Walker, our MPO coordinator, city-county, has a transportation, a joint transportation plan, and also personnel that goes with that. We've talked about that. And there hasn't been identified a good route because of the speed that bicycles, you know, I wouldn't want to see anyone flying forward off their bike. Thank you.
Just like every other concern and problem that we have, it takes money. That's the short answer to the whole problem. If, in fact, we need to put that in, and that's something that we would like to have, it requires money. I'm sure the plans are already done. There's always tons of plans out there. It just takes a ton of money, especially with the rimrocks. Boy, that would be quite an endeavor. So I do believe it can be done, but I do believe it would require probably a grant from the federal government is probably how that would work.
Yeah, I think I agree with some of that. You know, 27th is under the jurisdiction of Montana Department of Transportation. So you'd need that kind of consolidated and joint planning. It's a definite engineering challenge, but so is the proposed path for walking and biking. Is it the stagecoach that goes down, Christie, down Zimmerman? I mean, that's sort of an engineering marvel, what has been planned there. And I think if we put creative minds at the table, we can do something equally beautiful. But we will need some cross-jurisdictional planning, for sure.
You know, also, the E-Bird organization, they've been doing a lot of, you know, urban renewal projects. And that could be an organization that we could work with to come up with ideas of how we can accomplish that. Because it would be really nice to have something like that where you could go around that corner with your bike. So TrailsNet and E-Bird, maybe it's time to get together and work on that.
I don't think I can add anything other than money. I really don't. I think that's where every stopgap is, is money. Where do we find the funds? How do we find the funds? And we need to be, again, laser-focused on every avenue of that.
Thank you. The next question is, some important keys to walkability are density and mixed use. Would you support more density and mixed use even if it means smaller lots and less single-family zoning?
Are you in? I'll choose first.
I definitely believe we have to do some infill, and there has to be some density. One of the interesting studies that I read was by the National Railers Association, who talked about millennials and Gen Xers having to move back with their parents during the COVID virus. And they've come out of the virus, those two groups, millennials and Gen Z, I'm sorry. And they're looking for the big house. They're looking for the bigger house in the backyard. And that was a study that was revealed, again, by the National Railers Association. That kind of surprised me. But in the city of Billings, I think there's...
Finish your thought. You can finish your thought.
I think there's plenty of opportunity for some infill. And again, I think Mayor Tom said something about the incentives that we didn't have to do such. So worth looking into.
Morgan is ruthless. I should have warned you.
Thank you. That was part of the recode. We rewrote our zoning codes for the previous two years. And I attended a lot of meetings, and that was very much a part of what we are talking about, is that mixed use. We're talking about how to make things more walkable. We're talking about accessibility. All of those things were deep dives into our rezoning, how those zoning codes work, how our planning works in order to accomplish those things for... Absolutely, yes. Thank you.
Well, as I look around Billings, it doesn't appear to me that that's the case. You go out east or west of town, boy, there's acre lots out there all over the place. There's not much density out there. Those are pretty nice lots, and they're building those nice trails with them as well. One of the things I'm concerned about is the older areas in our ward that aren't getting that attention and not able to, because they're old. So there's nowhere to put these walk paths and whatnot. So that's something that maybe we even need to start looking at, maybe alleyways or something like that to create those kinds of paths.
I think the idea of mixed use is exciting. I think there are lots of neighborhoods that want to have a market they can walk to or a cafe they can walk to. Some kind of light retail that is walkable and not designed to be a traffic magnet. Density is a different question. Density is very neighborhood-specific, very project-specific. I live in a neighborhood that is mixed density with single families on one end, surrounded by duplexes. And what we see is folks live in a single family for a while, and then they retire into a duplex. So there can be real value for that. But density really depends on transportation, schools, the character of the neighborhood. So I'm excited more about mixed-use, light-retail density. I'm a little cautious about.
You know, I don't... This is an interesting topic because I like it when the private sector and businesses, you know, create the environment that they want. I don't like it when the government tells you that you have to, you know, live in a dense environment. I mean, we're Montanans. We like our space. We like our big sky. I think people should have a choice of where they want to live and how they want to live, not be told that you're gonna all stay in this little area. So I have a little issue with that one. Triggered something.
All right. Yep, okay. The next question is, the Jim Dutcher Bike Trail ends at Josephine Park. Can we extend it to run to Riverfront Park? Need a map for this one.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so that's part of the marathon loop. And is it not, Christie? So the marathon loop, that area that got the build grant has the funding to do that. There are just more areas that have to be, have to be, have funding in order to link up. So it's a continuous, we go back to, how do we pay for it? Do we have a dedicated funding source? And some of those issues that make it able for us to complete that marathon loop. Thank you.
My answer seems to be consistent. It's money. Of course, it can be built. Anything can be built. We just have to have the right ideas and the funding to make it happen. In my business, yeah. I could buy a lot of equipment. I could do a lot of stuff. However, it comes down to funding. And if we have the funding, boy, let's dream, and we'll build it. And it'd be amazing, and we'll bring people to our town, and we'll make our town even better. So absolutely, I think we should definitely push forward on that.
So as flippant as I was being about the Heights portion of the Dutcher Trail being done, if I remember right, this portion, this particular sort of end of the marathon loop, there's some jurisdictional issues, too, right? There's some conflict between the city and the county. And this is one of those areas where we really need to work together and start doing some real problem-solving. So I know this was previously conceived of as part of earlier build grants, and it had to be taken out because of those jurisdictional conflicts. So this sort of harkens back to what we said earlier about really building those productive, ongoing city-county relationships.
Okay. All right. So that concludes the audience questions that were in the basket. Are there any other burning questions? Okay. Well, I just want to take the moment to say thank you to everyone for participating, for your thoughtful answers. We will send out the questions and then share responses as well. Anything else, Christie? Jed?
I just want to thank everybody for coming.
Yeah. Thank you all very much.